7:30, we'll call a regular City Council meeting of April 17, 2017, order. We do have a quorum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion with the addition of our approve the rehire of Wayne Moe on the consent agenda.
I make motion to approve.
Wasn't there another thing?
And under letting six, approve the mower to Friends of Linden Hill, up to 14,750.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Lildergan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes. A copy of the minutes for the special work session meeting of April 3, 2017, and the regular meeting of April 3, 2017, are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I got a motion by Almond Hurcock, second by Councilmember Canofla, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills, checks number 96127 through 96240 totaling $551,110.42. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, proclamations. We got a presentation, 2017 Annual Training Schedule Economic Impact and Environmental Briefing. Colonel?
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Zelka and City Council members. I'm Scott St. Sauber. Many of you know me, I'm the commander out of Camp Ripley, and I'm pleased to be here for the briefing that I give annually on what's going on at Camp Ripley, and for me, my last briefing with you guys as I'll be retiring this fall, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, but you'll be seeing a new commander this fall at Camp Ripley as I end my 37-year career in the military and move on to new and exciting things outside of the Army. But tonight, I just want to run over what's going on at Camp Ripley. Next slide, I have the clicker, that works really well because I can do it myself. Our mission hasn't changed. Obviously, you all are very aware of our mission and what we do at Camp Ripley, and I really have always called it the triple bottom line, our federal mission, our state mission, and our community mission. Our federal mission is still ongoing and very strong, and even though our deployment cycles have reduced, and what you'll see in the slides coming up that talk about what we're doing this summer, we've kind of flattened back to a normal training schedule. We've already moved a number of pieces of equipment to Europe. We're sending a battalion over to Europe this summer for the European Reassurance Initiative in Estonia, Latvia, and Poland, and we'll also be sending some of that equipment up to Sweden to be doing an exercise with Sweden this summer. So you probably already noticed trains coming in and out of Camp Ripley, and although it won't be like it has been in the past, that equipment will all go out this spring and come back at the end of the summer, so you can expect that. All a part of that federal mission. Our state mission obviously has not changed, protect the property and citizenry of the state of Minnesota at the call of the governor, and we continue to ramp up to do that. We are fully prepared for our spring. If there's flooding across the state, we store a lot of the equipment here, a lot of that equipment is staged here and kept at Camp Ripley. So we're in a constant rotation with those types of exercises. And of course, my community mission, and that's what we're doing right now, making sure we're out in the community every year, telling you what's going on and what you can expect from Camp Ripley throughout this summer. So our mission is simply that easy. Economic impact, I think what you'll see here is that we've, as I mentioned, we've flattened out. So you can see here the years where we were in the war, ending the war cycle, we had a lot of construction going on, and one thing about construction, I've talked about it for a number of years, is we made the improvements over the last 10 to 12 years that we needed to make for the next 30 to 40 years. So that, all that investment was made by the federal government and the state government into Camp Ripley, and that ends up being those numbers then for, for the project numbers is starting to reduce. Now that'll be around that five to six million a year if we have no more storms that affect us, but we tend to have flattened out, and you'll see that with our economic impact. And I think you should expect over the next five to 10 years, that number to be somewhere around 280 to 320 million a year. So very stable into what we're doing out at camp, and a very, very specific way we've done it. Now, since I started, obviously, our training season is extended. You all remember the June, July, and August training schedules, but we really start now already in April and May, and we head out into September and October, a little bit more, which is actually nice because we, instead of really ramping up, we spread that out over a number of periods, and it helps us with our gap marketing. Our accomplishments over the last year, just a couple of things that I'll point out, and I'll talk about a couple of them later, is that, you know, the rail movement last year, you all remember the, we moved 1,300 pieces of equipment off of Camp Ripley, the largest rail movement we've had in many, many, many years. It was handled very well, it was really supported well by the community as we moved those trains in and out of Camp Ripley. This year, I had the opportunity to host the president of Croatia out at Camp Ripley. She was a very, it was a very nice visit by her and her team, and I since then have been to Croatia twice with my team as we're developing a NATO training center in combination with the Croatians, because the Croatian base in Slunge, which is in the southern part of the country, is very similar to Camp Ripley. The terrain's very similar, the size is very similar, and so as part of our state partnership program, my team has been over to Croatia a couple times to help them build that capability in the southern Balkans. We also had passing of two general officers, General Vesey, most people remember General Vesey, and that is probably the one time, if you had the opportunity to be out at camp, you'll see a funeral of such magnitude, where they sent the actual Kason team and honors team from Arlington National Cemetery to inter General Vesey at the State Veterans Cemetery. And of course, we also lost one of our own, Brigadier General Gary LeBlah, who brought me up, he was one of my mentors in the guard, and we lost him this last summer and did his service at Camp Ripley as well. And then on the bottom, the arming of security guards is ongoing. Our security guards at Camp Ripley are all armed. I'm currently in the process of the final stages of arming our military policemen that drill with us on weekends and that work for us in the summertime to continue what we need to do for the force protection of Camp Ripley for the soldiers and civilians that work every day on and off the installation. We also do a lot of post-wide exercises, emergency response exercises, as well as we've been doing a lot with our law enforcement community, with the Little Falls Police Department, Morrison County Sheriff's Department, in active shooter-type events and things where we need to respond to our own internal threats. So doing that as well. Just an update on our active nature damage, you're all aware that we had an F-1 tornado last fall in September. We have done all of the contracting processes, we're at about a 65% design and replacement of those facilities. We'll actually award those contracts yet this summer and probably start tearing down the old buildings this fall and then reconstructing. So those, these four total loss buildings right here, we received about $29 million from the federal government, and that'll be rebuilding that infrastructure so that economic impact statement next year will look better, but I'm not suggesting we have more tornadoes or anything like that. That was quite an exercise for us, but luckily for us, in all of the training that we do in preparation for events that would affect our communities, every once in a while, you have to use that for yourselves. And I couldn't be more proud of the team at Camp Ripley and the law enforcement community that was on Camp Ripley at the time, and our own police forces and your teams as well that helped us and got us back on our feet, so we were up and running without any problems, no loss of life, and very, very minor injury to a few people. So we're very, very fortunate. So we'll be taking care of this 5.5 million, these smaller buildings, but the larger buildings, that will take a period of years. So it'll be about two years before those facilities are done and back in production at Camp Ripley. But, you know, everybody likes those pictures, when it took this building right here, which was a maintenance shelter, we were about a week from dedicating the solar field, if you remember that. And it took it up, and then it threw it right in the middle just to create a new challenge for us to see if we could solarate any better. So, but we got it all fixed up with everybody's help, and we're well back to it. One of the newest ranges we build will come online this fall. What does that mean? We'll be louder. Why wouldn't we be? You know, we actually updated this range, we're just, all we're doing is spreading out the amount of tank fire that we have to do, our tank firing, that a lot of you know this, living in the community, it starts earlier in the year, it's a lot of weekends, and because of the readiness standards of our brigades to be able to deploy now under the new readiness models, we have to have them ready at a high rate at all times. So it's about a four-year training model, so they have to do a lot more firing. This range will do all of that for us, it's a very, very long range, it does all, it's all automated and target tree, it's about an $8 million range. It's taken a while to get it online, but now we'll be able to shoot four tanks online or Bradley's. We also do, this is overlaid with heavy sniper, so we can do all our sniper qualifications and firing as well. And then you'll see we have a UAS tactical strip, so a lot of our shadow aircraft that we fly, our UAVs we fly, they'll be able to do that from a tactical location downrange than just off of our airfield on Camp Ripley. So this range you can expect to come on late this fall. Here's kind of a look at our schedule. In May, you'll see that we're starting to ramp up again, about 10,000 in May, a nice flow here, not a lot of noise, a lot of engineering units coming into Camp Ripley, and then we'll finish up with our civilian training, because that usually ramps down, it ramps up in the spring, we do a lot of our live-fire training, a lot of our bucket training, you'll see the helicopters right now, there's a number of helicopters that are doing bucket training right now with the DNR, so we're finishing up that training right now. We've also got an aircraft unit out of Minot Air Force Base doing their gunnery up here right now with their helicopters, and so we have a little bit of that going on, and then we'll move on. But May is a very, very much just a standard month for us. Obviously, if you're in, the DAV turkey hunts coming up, I hit one on the way to town tonight, I've never hit a turkey before, and I hit one two miles out of town, so I don't know what the deal is. I couldn't believe I saw one right there, but, well, actually, I didn't see it. So if you need any turkey, it's two miles north. June, June is a busy month for us, and it always is, but here's what I want you to take away from this slide. See all the states that are here? Five artillery battalions, five, okay? Artillery battalions make a lot of noise, and so you can expect in pretty much the entire June timeframe, both south end of camp and the north end of camp, there'll be a lot of artillery firing. So those lights in the sky, you always remember those when they're, when we're shooting illumination rounds and things like that, you can expect a lot of those kind of fireworks from Camp Ripley in June as we have a lot of artillery that'll, as well as the tanks on the range at the same time. So very, very busy month for us. July, again, we have, the artillery units will be ending up, we'll have one combined arms battalion coming in from Ohio, and then this division right here out of Wisconsin, this is a large, large command post exercise for multiple units. So this will be actually run between Fort McCoy, Wisconsin, and Camp Ripley. So you can expect a lot of traffic on the highway, okay, and toward the end of July, we're going to be moving a lot of equipment, a lot of communications platforms back and forth, you'll see a lot of helicopter traffic up and down the corridor, so just be aware of that in July as that exercise is going on. Also down here at the bottom, we'll be hosting the National Best Warrior Competition for the National Guard. So they'll bring, we'll be bringing in the best of the best of the National Guard soldiers that'll be going through a series of competitions to determine the best warriors in our force from across the United States, so that'll be quite an exercise. And I brought with me tonight, just so I could, you guys could all get your eyes on him, my new sergeant major out of Camp Ripley is Command Sergeant Major Matt Erickson. Matt comes to us from over by the, over by the Moorhead, Detroit Lakes area, he's coming into Camp Ripley, and him and I have served together, we served together overseas, he was one of my first sergeants, so we have a very good relationship from the past. And of course, you probably all know Chief Birkey, Sheriff was my communications guy, he's the one that makes these slide work, or I fire him. He hasn't got fired yet, we're good. August, 16,000, again, a very busy month for us, August moving into this fall. Not a whole lot of extra, except you do need to be aware that there's the air wings. A lot of people this time of year, or throughout the year now, I think people are getting used to the C-130s, but the C-130s are in a much higher deployment rotation right now. They're rotating for short tours and then back, and they're constantly in rotation, so you should expect to see them day and night, especially in this month because they'll be doing low levels, we'll be doing a lot up in the pillager areas, they come in and out, depending on the ski routes or the routes they fly from St. Paul up here, this is a unit out of the cities. But again, a lot of states here training, the combined arms battalion will be finishing up, a marine battalion out of Camp Ripley, so we'll have a marine battalion up here doing a lot of groundwork as well. And then, of course, in August is when I bring the Gold Star families in. One of the, one of the best events that I'm involved in yearly, also, you know, it's one of those events where if you've been involved with Gold Star families, those that have lost a service member, it's a, it's a joyous occasion, but also, you know, there's much emotion involved. But we bring them out to camp, and we were a little concerned the first year, we did it a number of years ago, but they truly love coming out there and re-engaging with the military, and we're proud to do that. So just be aware the Gold Star families will be out on, at camp this summer as well. In September, you'll see our numbers go way down. Our numbers go way down, and then we start our civilian, our fall civilian training. So you'll start to see our civilian numbers ramp up. So as we finish up our, we'll have our IDT, our drill weekends, our annual training cycles run down, but then we start right into our fall suite of events with all of our, all of our first responders and all of our law enforcement officers. Also, our snowplow training, you all know, is in September, so the MinDOT is up with all of their snowplows, so that's when you see them running all over our roads, you know, and all over at Camp Ripley, and nothing's changed. Every new crew that comes in, it never ceases to amaze me, and about day two, I got one stuck in the front gates, and I got a big snowplow stuck in there and stuff going, but I'll tell you, after they're done, it's amazing. It truly is amazing watching what they can, what they can teach all those drivers. So it, it's a great event for Camp Ripley, it's a great honor for the state of South Dakota, because as I tell people all the time, it'll never mean anything to you until you're going down the interstate with your grandkids in the back of your car in a whiteout blizzard and know that those guys know what they're doing, and gals know what they're doing in those snowplows. That's a pretty good value for the state of Minnesota, coming up here and doing that work. I'll talk a little bit about Community Appreciation Day. Put this on your calendar, please, we want to see you out at Camp Ripley. Biennially, we hope, we hold our open house for the public, and this year, on September 17th, we'll be honoring Korean War veterans. That tribute will be at 1:00 PM, obviously, that's held at the museum, it is open to the public, but more importantly, for one guy in this group that's here tonight, that will be my change of command ceremony at 1:30 out at Camp Ripley, and I'd invite everybody to come out, if you've never seen a military change of command between commanders, this would be an opportunity for you to see that, and I'd love to thank everybody for all the support from the community of Little Falls that everybody's given me for the seven years that I've commanded Camp Ripley. So we hope to see you all out there on the 17th of September. In October, then, we're, again, about mixed, these are mostly, these are going to mostly be IDT or drill weekends. Again, we have some artillery coming in to do some fall shooting, and this is our hunt suites, we'll start our fall hunts down here, the DAV and the DNR archery hunts. I'm proud to say our deer are returning, our numbers are up, and that's always a consideration of how we manage and what we're doing out at camp, but we've suffered the same things that the county and the area do, and so our numbers are looking well, and we have a lot of deer out on Camp Ripley, a lot of studies going on right now. And then, of course, all of our, all of our sheriff's associations and farm marshals become divisions, become very good customer at camp now, they come out and do about all their, their regional and state meetings out at Camp Ripley now. So we continue to add to that state-level market that we have in trying to gap-market those areas to keep us busy. Our partners really haven't changed, Minnesota DNR, obviously, their conservation officers still live, and their rookie school goes on at Camp Ripley, the State Patrol, the academy is being conducted currently, as well as funeral honors and some of their other teams. HSCM, I just signed up a couple of new exercises there, so Homeland Security Emergency Management will be doing some larger exercises, and then, of course, MinDOT. Our environmental programs, again, a banner year for us, really, truly amazing what this team does for me out at Camp Ripley. This team recently won the Army Natural Resource Conservation Award for the Department of the Army, and now they're competing at the Department of Defense level, again. I can't say enough about these guys, they, they not only protect the environment we live in, and they take the resources that we have, but they hold me accountable and our soldiers accountable for everything that we do, knowing how important that our resource is, that that 53,000 acres is to us, and that 18 miles of Mississippi River is to us. So I'm very, very proud of the work that team does, empowering the soldiers to train and doing the work that they did do. Now, obviously, you can, you can see also, we're very much into green energy, if you were around last week, you noticed that we finally did dedicate that solar field, it's working marvelously out at camp, but you can see we're doing more projects in geothermal. We currently have two of the largest horizontal fields in Minnesota out at Camp Ripley. We are working right now on things I don't understand, I know when you turn the light switch on, it works, but they tell me this microgrid thing is a pretty cool deal, so I trust them, that it's a pretty cool deal. And then, of course, we're working toward our goals of 20% energy reduction by 2020 per our requirements. Our environmental partnerships, you'll start to see a lot of our interns now, a lot of interns showing up at Camp Ripley for the summer, a lot of our, of our cultural natural resource programs are ongoing, and I'm seeing a lot of young interns right now, they just got done with the Bears, our Bears are really on the, on the upswing right now. I'm not sure what it looks like countywide, but on Camp Ripley, we've seen, we've seen quite a, that cycle going to the upside, a lot of young Cubs, and we were, did those visits this spring, and now we'll start our summer suite of work and the work that they're doing out at camp. Our surveys are ongoing, update on her, Ripley, our Golden Eagle, she actually lived, you'll see her chart right here, she, she lived over in the Long Prairie area all winter long, along the river over by Long Prairie. She came back to camp a little less than a month ago, and then she made her way all the way up, and she currently is at her summer home where there's about a foot and a half of snow north of the Arctic Circle, almost on the Beaufort Sea. She's currently being studied as the farthest north breeding Golden Eagle in the United States, and now the farthest north-going Golden Eagle. So there's a lot of studying being done on this girl, and so we keep an eye on her, and she's got a collar on her, and we're tracking her all summer long, so hopefully she comes back for her third winter, next winter, and they can really get the data. But this is, this is the kind of data that's capable of being done right here in our community, and we have great, great support to do that. We have ongoing research, obviously, with the long-eared bat, of concern, obviously, for everyone, especially in the logging industries and areas, so we have a lot of that. I still have bats with backpacks flying all over Camp Ripley, so the guys are working on those as well. Community outreach, again, a lot of school kids coming out, a lot of programs going on, everybody loves the Bears when they're this size. Interestingly enough, the two-year-olds are not as nearly as, as excited to go down the hole and get as they are this little dude, but they enjoy that. Our turkey hunts are coming up, our deer hunts, our fishing events. We didn't have a lot of, a lot of biathlon this winter, as you all know, you know, but interestingly enough, we're doing some work to our biathlon range right now, we're adding snow guns, so by next year at this time, we'll be making snow to supplement that, to be able to handle some more cross-country skiing and those type of Nordic events out at Camp Ripley. Our prescribed burning, we're just about done. I think we're down to about, we burn about 14,000, about 15,000 acres in hazard and about 840 acres in mission enhancement, we're under 1,000 acres left to burn and will be done for the year. So we've had a very good spring for burning off camp, and if you were out today driving, you notice we're doing, we're doing a lot of work along here right, right along the border right now, just finishing up some of these hazard reduction burns and burns over there. So I'm very happy with that, and people ask me, you know, what's the thing that worries me the most as a commander? Well, it's a fire off the installation, a fire off or on, that's the hardest thing to deal with in the summertime, and we've had both, so we want to make sure that we do everything we can to reduce that as we get into the live-fire season. ACUB, what a banner year we've had in Army Compatible Use Buffer. 39 completed transactions for almost 3,500 acres. Of that, 1,005 was state lasered outdoor heritage money, 1 million of that was right from the Department of Defense, which we're one of the only guard installations that's benefited from that program recently, and then another, 2.5 million from the National Guard Bureau directly. So all that money has executed, all these partials around Camp Ripley were executed this year. Bowser is our primary agent that does that for us, board and water, soil, resources on the, on the conservation easement side, and obviously, fee acquisition would be the DNR. We've done very little fee acquisition lately, it's been almost all conservation easement. You're all aware of our Camp Ripley Sentinel landscape, this is our newest program, which teams us up with the other large entities, the US Department of Agriculture, Department of the Interior, and the Department of Defense. This has come a long ways, we just received our first grant through the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. This expands our ACUB zone out to about 800,000 acre, is that right? 804,000 acres, and it really takes in the watershed districts, it's built off the watershed district plans. Very supported by the Commissioner of Agriculture in the state of Minnesota, as well as the Department of Defense, the, and all the other, the program, the Nature Conservancy, the USDA, all of those agencies. So we just had a large meeting, we had an open house to tell people more about what we're doing in this area, so very excited about this, it really opens up that aperture for federal funding to do more acquisition and more conservation easement work with other landowners that are interested in partnering with us to continue our mission. I mentioned our solar field, you probably were out there, if you haven't, please stop on and take a look at it, it's doing very, very well, it's meeting its requirements, it does do something for us, which is very important, and that brings us to what's called a net-zero facility, that's a requirement by the federal government, and it brings us more towards that 20% goal, and it is the largest solar array on any National Guard installation in the United States currently. So it's quite an accomplishment, it's quite a partnership with Minnesota Power, and we're very proud to have it up and running. That's it, that's what we got going on. Questions of me, anything I can answer for you? It's your last shot at me, well, not your last, you can come out and yell at me.
Is your Best Warrior competition open to the public?
Sergeant Major, do you know?
Uh...
Don't have to, let us get back to you, let us get back to you, Raquel.
Events are isolated out in our training area, so it might be hard to visually see what's going on.
Let us send you something in, though, I would suspect, you know, maybe a couple of the award ceremonies and maybe some of the events that don't, that aren't fully tactical, because that's what he's referring to, there's a lot of tactical exercise that goes into that, so there's some night operations and obviously, the full gamut of individual military training, so, but we certainly will let you know.
Mr. President, I would just like to comment, like I do every year, how appreciative I am of, and how lucky we are to have Camp Ripley and the amount of business that they generate for our community, what a great asset it is, what a great community partner they are. I feel very lucky to be able to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and through my job as mayor, get to have a lot of contact with the Colonel. You're going to be truly missed by this community and many members of it, you've done a fantastic job out there with continuing to open it up to, it's no longer the little secret north of Little Falls, there's many opportunities, go out there and see a lot of great things. So thank you for your service, but most of all, thank you for the great job you've done out at Camp Ripley.
No, thank you, it's the, honestly, the community, the community is the most important thing that makes us successful. We couldn't do, honestly, what we do if you didn't support us. You all know that the, almost 1,000 employees that come to Camp Ripley every day live in the communities around Camp Ripley, and so it is so critically important that we have your support to be able to do what we do, that we can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training, Mayor?
Mr. President, I received a letter that I would like to read. Dear Mayor Zelka, Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training is the occupational regulatory agency charged with the vital responsibility of maintaining selection, education, and licensing standards for the 437 Minnesota law enforcement agencies that employ over 10,500 peace officers across our state. While the Post Board performs many functions, a significant portion of the Post's responsibility is dedicated to conducting compliance reviews of Minnesota law enforcement agencies to ensure they are meeting legislatively mandated training and department policies on use of force/firearms training, emergency vehicle operation, and pursuit driving training, and mandated departmental policies. On March 30th of 2017, opposed... On March 30th of 2017, a post board standards coordinator conducted a review at the Little Falls Police Department. After a comprehensive review of their records concerning mandated employee training and department policies, I am pleased to inform you that your police department passed the review. Ensuring all law enforcement agencies around the state are in compliance plays a pivotal role in maintaining the high level of professionalism we have enjoyed in Minnesota for many years, and that professionalism translates into quality law enforcement services for the citizens of Minnesota. Please take a moment to recognize your police department for this important accomplishment. Sincerely, Nathan Argov, Executive Director. Chief Schermers, congratulations and great job.
Consent Agenda 2016 Consumer Confidence Report. Water Treatment Facility Receive. Animal Control Report, March 2017 Receive. Certified Local Government Report, Fiscal Year 2016 Heritage Preservation Commission Accept. Display of Fireworks Birotechnics Display, Dam Festival, June 17, 2017 Approve. Fire Department Report, May, or March 2017 Receive. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, April 2017 Receive. Investment Recap, dated March 31, 2017 Receive. Outdoor Event, West Side Bar, May 13, 2017 Approve. Outdoor Smoking Area Location Amendment. On-sale Liquor License, West Side Bar Approve. Planning Commission Minutes, February 2017 Receive. Police Department Report, March 2017 Receive. Public Works Department Report, March 2017 Receive. Reviewed Financial Statement, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, December 13, 2016 Receive. Reviewed Financial Statement, Morrison County Animal Humane Society, December 31, 2016 Receive. Sale of Fireworks, Temporary Structure TNT. Fireworks, Walmart Parking Lot, Approve. Taxi License, Camden &amp; Scott, Little Falls City Cab LLC Approve. Water Treatment Facility Report, March 2017 Receive. Just a wish to the council.
Mr. President, I motion that we accept, approve, and receive the items from the consent agenda.
Second?
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilwoman Lundberg. For approval, any discussion?
Excuse me, you didn't include item R, which is hire the returning summer employee. So, I'm assuming that's included.
Does it mean your motion?
I revise my motion.
Raquel?
I revise my second.
Any discussion? I have a question for the chief on the West Side Bar deal. I seen you signed off on that one. We're not worried about noise down there with the noise ordinance?
I talked to him. It's mostly industrial property over there, so it's private property, I mean, and it depends on to kind of contain that noise that we projected through there, so I do not think it's...
I have a question about that also. Looking at the picture here, it looks like all of the chain-link fence, the gates open inward. Shouldn't they open outward in case of an emergency?
I would have to, Craig?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. That's a concern. I'm just looking at the picture, and the gates are opening in, so people won't be able to get out if they have to.
Correct. Okay. We'll have them make that adjustment. Other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A poll, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, public hearing, resolution 2017-30, Order in Public Improvement 376, 7th Street Southeast. Greg?
We do have the publication, or the affidavit of publication, as well as the affidavit of notice to the property owners. That's in the packet here. Tonight, we're looking at 7th Street Southeast, in between Broadway and 2nd Avenue. If you recall, on our current project, we're looking at 2nd to 5th Avenue. That's ongoing right now. We're looking at adding two blocks just north of that, which we are talking about tonight. So, again, looking at the project location map, we are currently constructing these three blocks south of here. We're looking at adding these other two just to the north. So, looking at the project need, we did review all the way up to 27, but because that first section was reconstructed in, I think, 2000, that did not need to be reconstructed. So, it was now just from Broadway down to 2nd Avenue Southeast. We have had multiple sewer backups, frozen water service lines. As you'll see in the upcoming pictures, that the pavement does have a PAAAS rating of two. It's on a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being the worst, 10 being brand-new. This is on the lower end of the scale. The water main itself, we don't have record drawings on the water main, but we do have dates on the hydrants. Every hydrant is stamped with a date. And so, it's in between 1948 and 1952 is when those hydrants were installed. So, we believe that water main is in that same vintage, just because of the hydrants there. It is a 6-inch cast iron water main in that area. And then, the sanitary sewer was installed in 1919. It's a 12-inch clay pipe. The storm sewer is at the crossings or the intersections only, and that was installed between 1968 and 1973. Again, looking at the project need, this is 1st Avenue, and then, you've got quite a bit of potholing going on here. There is sections that do not have curb. Some sections do have curb on it as well. And so, we'd be looking at trying to replace this, repair the sanitary sewer, and improve the street and through there. Looking at the televising pictures, this is from the sanitary sewer. You'll notice this is a service line up here. You can see kind of the roots coming in through. That's actually a pretty sizable root ball that's starting to penetrate in through that sanitary sewer service line. Another one, you can see this is a crack going longitude along the pipe. There's another crack over here. So, the top of that pipe has basically cracked the length of that section. Another picture of a root ball. This one's coming in through the service line. You've got hair roots coming in through here, and then, it's starting to ball up. This is what causes a lot of our blockages and backups in our sanitary sewer, where the pipe is cracked, either through there or through the service lines where the roots come in. Looking at more pictures here, this is at a joint in the pipe back in 1919 when they installed this. The pipe didn't have O-rings or gaskets at the section. So, each one of these sections is basically just a dry fitting on one another. And so, you'll see a lot of times where these roots, that's where they'll infiltrate to start with. This actually, you can note up here, the camera was not able to get past this. So, you've got roots on this side, which we've chopped off because it's nice and straight, but it's still so far into the pipe that the camera was not able to get past that. So, we don't know what's down here. You can kind of see something, what might be some roots right over in this area, but the camera wasn't able to get past that section. Again, another picture with the roots in the service line. So, the proposed improvements that we're looking at doing along that stretch, we're looking at 8-inch sanitary sewer. If you recall, previously, it was a 12-inch sanitary. We're going to downsize that to an 8-inch. 12 is more of a larger main that you'd see if it was a trunk line going to somewhere else, commercial area or something like that. 8 inches is plenty big for the area that it's serving. We'll be stubbing out the sanitary sewer services to the property line. We will be replacing the 6-inch with an 8-inch water main, and the water services will be stubbed to the property line as well. We'll be doing the storm sewer improvements in terms of the crossings at the intersections, replacing the catch basins. And then, we're going to be going with 32-foot urban section, which is curb and gutter throughout that stretch, as well as our typical pavement section, which is 5 inches of aggregate base and 3.5 inches of blacktop. So, looking at our opinion of probable costs, construction is at $280,639. With contingency and engineering, we're looking at $333,399. I will say that the construction cost is high. We did these estimates before we opened up bids for our 2017 project, our first stretch. So, I do expect this number to come down quite considerably, but I wanted to be consistent with what our feasibility report. So, I will, we will see that number come down quite a bit. Looking at the project funding, our assessments are at 51.9%. We're looking at $172,932, with the city picking up the remainder for the total of The assessment rates are similar to our other projects in town. 32-foot wide urban front foot is at $37.93. The side foot is at $19.97. Sanitary sewer replacement is $28.20. The 6-inch sewer service line replacement is at $600, with a 4-inch new service at $800. Water main replacement is again at $37.93. The water service 1-inch replaced is at $700, with a new one at $1,200. Storm sewer in the residential area is at 16 cents per square foot of property. You will note that on some of the assessment rolls, that because the crossings were installed less than 50 years ago, we do credit those assessments for that account there. We assume that the storm sewer is going to last 50 years on their assessments, and so, if it was put in less than 50 years, we do credit that onto their account. Same way with the pavement. There is one property that had a stretch of pavement that was installed on, just north, at the intersection of Broadway. They paid for some curb and gutter, as well as some blacktop in that stretch. So, their assessment for the street is prorated based on that as well. So, looking at, the city doesn't intend to sell bonds to pay for the project. If the council approves this segment, it will be combined with other city projects. Property owners who are disabled or who meet income guidelines and are 65 years of age or older may apply for a deferment. And members of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves who are ordered into active service as defined in Section 190.05 subdivision 5B or 5C may also qualify for a deferment. Looking at the next steps to the project, tonight, we have the public hearing, which is April 17. We'll be looking at doing the design coming in here in April, advertising for bids April and May, with opening bids on May 16. Construction will be concurrent with our other projects during the spring and summer of 2017, with a final assessment hearing in either June through October, sometime that timeframe. But then, construction will be completed in the fall of 2017. So, a project recap, our current projects that we are constructing is about $750,000. These two blocks on 7th Street that we are asking tonight is about $333,399 for a total just under 1.1 million. You will recall, in 2016, we did pay down about 1.95 million in special assessments, so we are underneath that. We are still reducing our debt load if we do this project. Any questions about the project?
Questions, anyone, before we open up to the public?
Does the timeline that you were looking at for bids and that type of thing, I don't know where they're at with the other part? So, they flow together well?
They would flow together pretty well if we, the sooner we can do it, the better. You'll see later on in the agenda, I do ask for the council to authorize advertisement of bids tonight. So, that would move us along to be able to basically flow together if that contractor gets the work, yes.
Open up for public comment. Anyone from the public wishes to speak, raise your hand. You'll be recognized. You have two minutes. Anyone from the public? Go ahead. Name and address.
My name is Gail Zimmerman. My address is 107th Street Southeast. I'm the other end of, oops, excuse me, of 7th Street where it meets Broadway. And the picture that was shown there is somewhere else. You know, I just want you to see what my lot looks like. So, I've got 120 feet on that end. And I bought my house in 2014 from Paul and Beverly Minor. They paid in 2000 to have the road done. I don't know what else was done. I know there's a new copper line going into the house. And I don't know if that's hooked to the old water line that was in there, that they would have hooked up that to that. But anyway, when I bought that in 2014, I wasn't anticipating that three years later, that would have to be tore out and replaced. I was talking to my neighbor across the road, Mr. Tabit, who has lived there a lot longer than I have. He told me that intersection had the storm sewers. The intersection was redone in the year 2000 when they did the other side. So, I'm not sure if that's part of the storm sewer redo as well. Okay, so, and then, in looking at it, it's just, I guess that's the primary point for me, is it, there's nothing wrong with what I have there. It was done the same time as that one block over that you're not going to touch, because it's just fine. And I just really think that it shouldn't need to be. When I came in and brought this to your attention, then he did go check and find that they had paid something in 2000. As far as the prorating goes, and I understand it's going to be a math thing, but, you know...
Time's up, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Brooke DeYoung, and I reside at 106 7th Street Southeast. I live with Jeff Kearney Kenzie Hansen, and I consider them my family. We put our house up for sale on March 24 of this year. We were happy to accept an offer for our house on March 31. Three days ago, our realtor alerted us to the fact that we have a lien on our property for $12,782 for proposed construction that you're talking about. We have never received notice of this from the city, although, in talking to our neighbors, most of them received a letter about it about 10 days ago. Our realtor told us that we're responsible for this $12,000 before we close on our house May 30. Our family is middle-class, so this new financial responsibility wipes out a sizable chunk of our yearly income. We have carefully planned our move for an entire year, and carefully saving and budgeting. And this proposed construction is more than a shock to our family. We know that the sale of our house is now in jeopardy. I don't know what the options are at this point. I'm so sorry. But this community has treated my family well for seven years. We have been responsible citizens of the city of Little Falls. We pay our taxes, and we maintain our property. We ask that this particular project does not happen now. We ask for a postponement. Give this neighborhood at least a year. Give this neighborhood an opportunity to prepare and adjust and plan accordingly for our families. That is all any family wants, the power to plan and prepare for their loved ones. Sorry and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here. My name's Brenda Marshick. I live at 109 7th Street Southeast, right across from this couple that's selling their house. And I am also trying to sell my house. I'm a single person. I live on a very, very tight budget. I want to sell my house to move. And if you're putting this tax liability against me and my plans to buy a different house, it's going to be a lot of financial difficulty for myself, again, with short notice. I'm not even going to be able to plan, you know, to stretch my money out enough to cover the cost of what it's going to increase. And the consequence of being able to sell my house, who's going to want to look at a house that the road's all ripped up in? The summer was a perfect time for me to look to sell my house, and now, if you're ripping up the road, who's going to want to come and see it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none at 8:19. We'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council on resolution 2017-30? What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2017-30? Motion for discussion, please.
So moved.
Have a second?
Hold on a second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lildgren for Resolution 2017-30. Discussion?
Mr. President, a couple items to answer the public's questions there. Mr. Zimmerman, he lives on the north end of 7th Street of the project over by Broadway. When that project was initially reconstructed in 2000, it was from the intersection of Broadway up to Trunk Highway 27. So the utilities were reconstructed in that northern block. The previous owner approached the city to have blacktop installed in front of his property, which they did. And then he was assessed. Unfortunately, the sewer and the water was not reconstructed at that time. And so right now, we still have the same issue. Even though the street is in fair condition in front of his house, the sewer and the water are in poor condition. In order for us to connect the sewer up to it, or to reconstruct the sewer in that stretch, we do have to replace the sewer in front of his property. We do prorate the sanitary in front of the, or we do prorate the storm, the street in front of his house to account for that assessment that was taken in 2000. If he does have a copper water line that's in there right now, we wouldn't necessarily have to replace that if it is indeed copper. So that's something that we would look at when we're doing the construction. In terms of the house that's up for sale, I do feel for the folks. We did send out the mailing notice about 10 days ago. I think it was on April 5th is what the affidavit says. So I sympathize with them. But it's still something that, in terms of the utilities underneath it, they are in poorer shape that do need to get reconstructed.
Greg, is that 10 days? Is that typical notice that we give for?
We are required by the Chapter 429 to give them ample notice. 10 days is the minimum. And so that's why before April 7th is when we had to get it out. So we did get it out on the April 5th. Generally, it takes about two days to get to the property owners. So yes, they did get notice by deferment.
Any other discussion?
Can you do a street view of that part? Because I've driven up and down it numerous times, and I just recall it being in a lot rougher shape than the pictures that were distributed here.
And the area that you see in, that the pictures that you have, that is on the north end. That's for about, going from memory, about 100 feet or so. So this is the south end of the project. This is at First Avenue. And then right up here, this is at First Street. So this first stretch here, this was paved in the year 2000, like Mr. Zimmerman had mentioned. The street was reconstructed paved. Curb and gutter was installed on one side, but not on the other side. And so yes, the curb over here looks good, but the sanitary sewer and water main underneath are still old and need some attention. So you can see there.
Is that the drain there?
Nope. That's just the extension. So they, when they got done with the curb, they did a taper to bring it to match the existing the best that they could. There's no drain here. The drains are actually at the intersections. And there were no assessments on this block. The only thing that we've got here basically is an invoice from the city to the previous owner for streets and curb and gutter. And so we prorated those two items for the current assessment roll after Mr. Zimmerman mentioned to take a look at that. We did look at that to make sure that that was the case.
And this is staff-initiated, correct?
This is staff-initiated, yep. So we will need 7/8 vote in order to move forward with
We have any other projects in the hopper we could do if we don't do this one?
No.
Paid on debt for a year?
That's one option, yep.
What's that?
Paid on debt for a year.
Could that project be postponed until next year? Do you, I mean, with the sewer and the water lines, would they be able to, I mean, how serious were the amount of frozen water lines and plug sewers that you had to deal with there? I mean, could?
This year wasn't bad in terms of frozen water lines. We didn't have, we had a pretty mild winter. Who's to say what we're going to have in 2017, 2018? I have no idea. I can say where we are over there jetting those sewers quite regularly, probably about two or three times a year to keep that flowing. As you can see in the roots, there's quite a bit in there. It's something the council's got to decide upon, I guess.
But it's something that could be postponed for a year without too much of a hassle?
Could. I mean, it's just a matter of how much more staff time we'd look at putting towards it, yeah.
I mean, cost of the project, any construction costs are likely to continue to go up unless we see a huge drop in oil prices, which was what we saw between 2015, 2016, and in our projects coming in under estimate. I don't think we're going to, it's unlikely we're going to see that. So I mean, costs are probably going to increase. Interest costs and financing the projects are going to increase. So that's the other risk here is that delaying it another year increases the cost of the project.
Mr. President, I'm torn mostly because we know the shape of a lot of our city streets and sewers. And I believe Mr. Kimman has said that it would take two and a half miles a year for us to do, for us to even keep up, which would not mean that we would be gaining on the lack of quality streets and sewers. On the other hand, I hear the concerns of the residents. So it's going to be a tough decision either way because we know what the needs are, and there could be people down that street screaming because the shape of the road are, you know, in my minimal amount of wisdom, I would think that that would enhance the saleability of the property rather than having a battered street and having sewers that plug up. But I understand your concerns and feel your pain. It's just tough to delay and then go somewhere else and then have them say, well, I, we don't want it either because it's, sometimes it's out of need. How many times do we have to keep going to do the repairs? So it's a tough call.
Any other discussion?
Is it more cost-effective to do a street that you're already doing? I mean, if you're doing three blocks of it already, is it going to be more cost-effective to continue on that path?
Definitely will. I mean, yes, because like you saw in Mr. Zimmerman's case where we did the intersection, but in order to tie into that again, we usually stub out about 20 feet worth of pipe. So there's 20 feet of pipe that you stub out to connect up to the existing, and then you have to repair the blacktop beyond that because you've dug the hole down to it. Then when you come connect from the other side, you've got to dig down here and you're disturbing this blacktop again. So there's some street repair maintenance that you're going to have to incur by moving somewhere else as opposed to keep on going.
Any other discussion?
Well, and we're able to do this because we're not doing 9th Street, right?
Any more discussion? Hearing none. Resolution caller, roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak, oh, absent. Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-28, award sale of $885,000 in general obligation, permanent improvement bond, Series 2017A. Laurie, did you want?
So earlier today, we opened bids for sale of improvement bonds that would finance our 2016 petition projects. We did receive two bids, one from Northland Securities, the other from Dordy and Company. The net interest rate under Northland Securities, which is the low bid, is 2.6369%. The resolution that we're asking you to pass would authorize the sale of those general obligation bonds to Northland Securities.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilmember Lildgren for approval of Resolution 2017-28. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution caller, roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-29, award sale of $3275,000 in general obligation, refunding bond, Series 2017B. Laurie?
And again, we opened bids today, David Drowne's office opened bids to do a refunding bond for a couple of bonds, 2009A and 2009C, I believe. The interest rate on those bonds was a little bit higher. So we opened bids, competitive bids for those bonds. We did receive four bids. The low bid was from Piper Jaffrey at an interest rate of 1.9796%. I believe the savings that we will see with this bond sale was in the neighborhood of
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, and second by Councilmember Hansen for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution caller, roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Clubhouse re-roof, golf course, Matt Hartung. Greg?
We requested quotes from three local contractors to re-roof the clubhouse at the golf course. We did receive one quote from Matt Hartung in the amount of $3,750 to do the roofing at the golf course. This item wasn't budgeted for, but it is definitely needed. When you go up there and actually look at the roof, there's a section that is a rubber roof, and then there's another section that is asphalt shingles. For whatever reason, when they installed the rubber roof, they put it over the top of the asphalt shingles. So all the water that comes off of that roof goes underneath, and then it gets into the clubhouse. It is something that does need to get completed. We're only going to be doing the area that's the asphalt shingles. The rubber roof is fine. So tonight, we are asking for the council to award the quote of $3,750 to Matt Hartung Construction to re-roof the clubhouse of the golf course in the amount, or to be charged to the golf improvement fund.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to award.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Knopfler for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Pavement markings, markings, linescape, line striping?
We opened quotes for our 2017 pavement markings. We received two bids for it, one from Linescape Line Stripping in the amount of $28,065. Another one from Traffic Marketing Services in the amount of $42,023.24. We are recommending award to Linescape Line Stripping out of Pillager in the amount of $28,065 out of Pillager to be charged to the street department. They have been doing the pavement markings for the last at least three years that I'm aware of. They've been doing a pretty decent job, so I would continue to go with them.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award that the striping, the linescape.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Mayor Zilka for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Zoo buildings re-roof, buying of zoo, Matt Hartung Construction. Greg?
Again, we, from those same three contractors, we asked to give us quotes at the zoo. We budgeted $10,000 for the re-roof of the zoo buildings. It's the hexagonal buildings or octagon buildings that are, we're looking at re-roofing. They are starting to leak, and they were all re-roofed at the same point in time. So tonight, we are asking the council to award the quote of $11,500 to Matt Hartung Construction to re-roof the elk bison educational building at the zoo, and that would be charged to the zoo improvement fund.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hansen, second by Councilmember Lundberg for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approve mower contract with Friends of Linden Hill up to $14,750.
Linden Hill has approached us because they are looking to have a new, the Friends of Linden Hill have approached us because they're looking to purchase a new mower for their property. And they were working with John Deere Midwest Machinery to purchase that. They were going to go ahead and do it themselves on a 60-month no-interest financing through John Deere. However, they don't have an established line of credit, so they would approach the city to do, offer the same deal. John Deere does have a cooperative purchasing contract through NJPA, so we are going to investigate that as a price. But otherwise, if the NJPA contract, cooperative contract does not come in lower, we're recommending that they approve purchase of the mower not to exceed $14,750 with the trade-in value. And then the Friends of Linden Hill would reimburse us on quarterly payments for the 60-month timeframe that they had with John Deere.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the mower in an amount not to exceed $14,750.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hansen, second by Councilmember Knopfler for approval. Any discussion?
Is Linden Hill a nonprofit?
The Friends of Linden Hill are.
So doesn't NJPA have some grant money that they could maybe apply for to get this?
Not specifically in a project like this.
I know that they do have some grant money out there for projects.
Yeah, they do for innovative fund, it's called innovative funding. It's their major grant projects that they do have some other smaller grant things, but not really related to just a regular equipment purchase. It is something that, yeah, this is something that the Friends have budgeted for. They are planning, they're planning to do this. It just didn't work the way they intended. I mean, bottom line, it's going to come out to be the same result, and they're just utilizing the facility to help facilitate that purchase.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. New business, accept recommendation of the Housing Redevelopment Authority, ordinance number 956, Siri, authorize and direct sale of property Patriot Investments and Management LLC. Laurie?
Patriot Management and Investments approached to the HRA wanting to purchase some property. There is a map enclosed in your packet. They were interested in what is noted as parcel three on that map, which is in the Northwest Industrial Park. It's at just south of the intersection of Fourth Street Northwest and 9th Avenue. The square footage of the lot is about 47,000, just over 47,000 square feet. There is no water available to it. There is no, the road ends at the intersection of the vacated 8th Avenue. There's kind of a cul-de-sac there. There is a sewer manhole there and a lift station, so they are able to possibly have sewer by tapping into the manhole or just before the manhole of that area. They did come in and offer $5,000 for the lot, being there's not improvements there as far as road and water, limited sewer availability. The county has $5,100 as a value on the lot. So when the HRA looked at it, they agreed to accept their offer.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hansen, second by Councilmember Lildgren for approval of ordinance number 95.
And this would just be an introduction at this point?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we're not accepting the recommendation?
We can accept the recommendation, but then we just introduce the ordinance, so...
Okay. So I will make a motion to accept the recommendation and introduce ordinance number 95.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Hanson, second by Liljegren. Any discussion?
It looks like it's almost three blocks. Three city blocks for $5,000.
Nope.
We're just talking about the little one down on the railway, correct?
Correct.
Number three.
Number three.
No, no, no. No, just number three.
Just number three.
Okay, so half a block.
Yeah. The map was for potential other city properties that we have in the Northwest Industrial Area. The one that we're discussing tonight is only the lot.
The one with the red arrows. I get it.
And just when I think I'm starting to get this figured out, are we introducing, are we accepting, are we acting on this?
What we should do probably is two motions.
Two motions.
One to accept the recommendation, and then another introduction of the ordinance would probably be the cleanest way to do it.
Want to modify to accept and take out your introduction?
Okay. So I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, ordinance number 95. Now, you want to...
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, to accept the recommendation.
And now we need an ordinance?
No, we need to pass this one first.
We need to vote on that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Now, do you need a roll call on this one?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 95?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 95.
Ordinance number 95 has been introduced by council member Lundberg.
Thank you.
Accept recommendation of planning commission variance, Antoinette Wetzel, accept, approve? Greg?
On April 10th, the planning commission had a public hearing for a variance request on Antoinette Wetzel's property. She would like to construct a 30-by-48 detached garage. The planning commission is recommending to approve that variance. There have been other lots in the area that have had a variance granted to them. The unique situation with this particular lot is that it's a through lot, and so both sides have frontage to a road, and so that's where the variance request would come in. If it was a rear yard, then there wouldn't be the need for the variance request, but because it is a through lot, then it does require the variance because we're looking at putting it closer to the rear lot line.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by council member Knopfla, for approval. Discussion?
Would it be safe to say the lot is a through lot in technicality only? I mean, it is a back lot that just happens to be near Haven Road, right?
True, true. I mean, it abuts Haven Road on the backside, and the front side is on Pine, or, not Pine.
Pine Tree Boulevard.
Pine Tree Boulevard, thank you.
And it looked like the normal existing right-of-way there is pretty large to begin with?
On Haven?
Right.
Yes. Quite large, yes.
Can you pull that up on Google Maps?
I could pull it up on Beacon.
Okay.
And there isn't access that's going to be granted there, isn't that from, that could be granted? Wasn't there some deal with that, too?
On Haven, no.
They wouldn't give an access over there?
We would not be able to give an access off of Haven. When that was US 10, I believe there was...
Restrictions?
Restrictions on it as far as where they, those driveways could be placed, yes. Yep. So the request is for variance from the rear lot line here to be 15 instead of a 30-foot. There are other properties, specifically across the road, as well as down here, that have those detached garages closer than the 30-feet requirement.
Well, there's that one there on Haven, right on Haven Road.
Yep, there's this one right down here as well.
Right there, that's...
Yep. Same situation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2017-31, approve plans and specs, Public Improvement 376, Surface and Utility Improvement, Seventh Street Southeast, and call for bids.
Tonight, we're asking the council for approval to request bids from contractors, publish and request bids for the Seventh Street project, the two blocks between Broadway and Second Avenue.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Hanson, for approval of resolution 2017-31. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll, please.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-32, supporting local government aid funding. Adopt, John?
Yes. Recent bills that come out of the conference committees in both the House and the Senate have not included an increase to local government aid that was, we've been pushing for through the Coalition Agreement Minnesota Cities of $45.5 million, which would restore it to the 2002 levels. The House bill includes no increases to local government aid, and the Senate bill has a one-time increase in 2018 and then a decrease in 2019, effectively nullifying any increase. And actually, we would receive a decrease from what we received today in 2019 based on the runs that the Senate has provided. These bills are not what we've been pushing for in LGA. They have some measures to eliminate funding for the city of Minneapolis at this time in one of the Senate bills. It is turning into a political football again, LGA. And we really, it's a huge component of our budget. It is 50% of our general fund budget. As I presented before, if we eliminated LGA and we cut our spending by 50%, we'd still have to increase taxes in our community to cover that cost. It's just, it's a huge resource that we rely on to operate our city and do the best that we can. Supporting the increase is, seems prudent when there's a $1.6 billion surplus that they're having to utilize for a lot of these resources. I know there's a lot of other needs, but LGA is not been, it has not been where, funded to where it was in 2002, and subsequently, it's seen many reductions, only to get its only substantial increase of $80 million in 2013. So it's time that we support continued increase towards it, with nothing worse than at least keeping the formula intact, keeping even the large cities of Minneapolis, St. Paul, Duluth, to receiving LGA. They're part of the formula. Their, the formula is showing that they have, based on the criteria and the formula, the same needs that we have, and they're receiving an amount of the funding proportionately much lower than what we in greater Minnesota receive. Certainly much lower than what we receive in Little Falls. So it's a crucial asset. I have no other way to put it, and I think we need to show our elected officials that we, we won't take, we won't take it without a fight that they're going to utilize this against one side or the other in coming up with a tax bill that doesn't even have an increase for future years, let alone just a one-time increase and a decrease.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Knopfla, for approval. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. President, to John's point of the fact, we've seen tables of what it'll do to property tax if they continue to move forward with decreasing LGA, and I believe this would be a step in that direction, and then hard to say what would happen after that, but, and it gets to be pretty drastic what the property taxes would have to increase to keep our services. So I'm a strong supporter of this.
I do have one other note in there. We added an additional, further resolved component to our resolution. This is, a lot of this is based on a sample resolution from the Coalition. There were three filings that included reverse referendums for municipalities, even county governments, and one was on being able to have 10% of your voting electorate sign a petition that would reverse any increase that you made to your levy. These are, these are not, these are not measures of local control. I don't care what they want to tout at the state level. By doing that, you're not, you're not giving local control to the people, you're giving it to 10% of the people to maybe sway an election that's going to cost the city money to implement and really hinder our abilities to serve our communities. Levy authority is the only other thing that we got next to LGA when it comes to local government revenues. So it's, that's 99% of our budgets. I mean, not technically, but it's upwards of that. So, I mean, these, these measures that are included, fortunately for the referendums, they didn't see their way into the final bills, but there's still possibility that they could be added as amendments. So we need to show our solidarity in standing up against those referendums.
And, Mr. President, once again, to reiterate what John is saying, I believe, is we have been elected to make these decisions by the public, just like the people down at the Capitol have been elected to make decisions. So don't tie our hands to make local decisions. That's, I don't believe that's the way it's meant to be.
I think in addition to passing this, it would be good for each one of us to contact our state representatives and our senators and let them know that, individually and as corporately as a council, let them know that this is just not acceptable.
I agree.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Carries?
Anybody got any reports or announcements?
I just have a quick report, and John can expand on a little bit, but John and I were at a NJPA, National Joint Powers Alliance Board Retreat. Also went to the student recognition, the student achievement recognition the night before. Packed with information on the board retreat, but what an amazing entity NJPA is and what an asset they are to our communities, our counties, and our schools and our nonprofits. Steve Jones was there, John was there, Steve and John are ex-officios, Mike Wilson from the Peers area is board chair, and then Mark Gerby and myself serve on the board, so we have pretty good representation for our area. But I'm, it's my first year elected into that position, I'm looking forward to working to see what we can do for our community, our schools, and our area.
It is a, they have, it's incredible to see an entity that has, I guess, local government powers because it's crafted to serve school districts, county governments, city governments, and also nonprofits, that they are doing really good things with the program, mainly around the cooperative purchasing is their main driver for revenue. So that contract that I was talking about earlier with the John Deere, they have that nationwide, actually, including parts of Canada. So every one of those cooperative purchases that is made has some level of administrative fee, and that comes back to funding National Joint Powers Alliance. Within Region Five, if we make a purchase on that, they credit that back to us, so we actually pay no administrative fee. So we are really fortunate in that, in that aspect, that we're getting competitively bidded cooperative purchasing costs, quotes, these meet all the state criterias in terms of competitive bidding if it's over $100,000. So it's really a huge asset to us that we can save that money and get credit back that administrative fee that we can use towards future purchases. There's even talk in the works that, instead of having to have to use it towards the next purchase, that they will be at a certain time just crediting that back to Region Five entities. So I know that's something that they've talked about in the works. Not only do we have the cooperative purchasing aspect, we do utilize them for group health insurance piece as well. The innovation funding, as I mentioned, too, is a huge asset, and that's another $400,000 or more. The last couple of years, it's been growing every year. That's money that's going towards really cool innovative grants into our region. So I know we do have a couple even projects and applications in the work for this year on funding this year.
Also, didn't they fund half of our search firm for...
Yep, with David Jones and our, yep, our financial advising, because they have a preferred contract with him, and another, there is another financial advisor if we so choose, but we've done work with David for so long, he really knows our assets and our work. Yes, half of that expense is covered. So his services are really valuable to us to be provided. So, you know, most communities may not be in a position to be able to afford that, but having 50% of his costs covered really is, really is a very good asset to us, so...